This is the February 11, 2016, Situate Planning Board meeting. We have an agenda that's been published. Do we have a second?
A move?
Yeah.
I second.
Move and a second.
I move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I jumped the gun there. Okay, first item on our list tonight.
Poor Siri.
Should we?
Make sure they sign in.
Is the public hearing for the stormwater general bylaw. And I suppose you want me to cover this whole thing?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, so just bear with me for a second here. Notice is hereby given that a public hearing will be held or is being held by the Situate Planning Board on Thursday, February 11, 2016 at 7:30 PM in the Selectman's Hearing Room, Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Situate, Massachusetts, to consider amendments to the Situate General Bylaw, Section 32050, Stormwater, as described, as all described below. These amendments will appear together as an article on the warrant for the annual town meeting commencing April 14, 2016. All references below to sections refer to the sections of the Stormwater General Bylaw. So the proposed changes to the Town of Situate General Bylaw, Section 32050, include the following. One is the addition of paragraph three for definitions and renumbering of the paragraphs that follow after that. Two, changes, change former paragraph three, now paragraph four, entitled applicability as follows. One, or little "I," the threshold for applicability of the stormwater bylaw, which was previously 15,000 square feet of disturbance, will become 18,000 square feet of disturbance. Two, 25 percent, there will be a 25 percent slope criteria rather than a 15 percent criteria, which will be used to trigger the threshold for steeply sloping areas of 1,000 square feet or more. Three, the threshold, quote, "Any development of an undeveloped parcel that will increase stormwater runoff," end quote, will be replaced by, quote, "Rendered 25 percent or more of an undeveloped lot impervious," end quote. Number four, exemptions will be clarified to include lots on an approved common driveway or subdivision approved under the subdivision rules and regulations adopted August 3, 2010, or later. Number five, changes to the, to public roads resulting in increases in impervious area will now be subject to the bylaw. Item number three, in paragraph five, administration and throughout changes were made to clarify the roles of the planning board and the conservation commission, together referred as, quote, permitting authority, end quote, the ability of the planning and the conservation department to administer the bylaw for disturbances of 40,000 square feet or less, or less than 1,000 square feet with a 15 percent or greater slope. That, that, that doesn't quite make sense. It says the ability, it says to clarify the roles and then, and then the ability?
To administer, I think maybe that's another thing that we're trying to clarify.
Okay, so you're clarifying the ability of the planning board?
Yeah.
Language was added to require that work under a stormwater permit be completed within three years of issuance. Number four, in paragraph seven, submittal requirements, requirements for an application fee, an erosion control plan, a site plan, and pre and post-construction operation and maintenance, maintenance plans were added. Number five, in paragraph eight, performance standards, standards for peak discharge volume and land subject to coastal storm flowage were added. Number six, in paragraph nine, review process, the deadline for board to act on a stormwater permit, permit was extended from 21 to 30 days. Number seven, in a paragraph 13, enforcement provisions were added that the permitting authority may, may write a written order to enforce the bylaw and fines can be subject, can be issued subject to state and town laws, bylaws, and regulations authorizing the use of noncriminal disposition. And a change to the town's noncriminal disposition bylaw for this purpose is also proposed. The text of the current stormwater general bylaw and the complete text of the proposed amendments to the stormwater general bylaw are available for inspection during normal business hours of the Situate Town Hall, at the offices of the town clerk and the planning board, at Town Hall, 600 Chief Justice Cushing Highway, Situate, Massachusetts. Any persons wishing to comment on the proposed general bylaw amendment should appear at this public hearing tonight, the time and place designated. Written comments on the general bylaw amendment will also be accepted by the planning board prior to the public hearing. Would you like to, is there any overview you want to do, other than what we just talked about, or do you want to?
Maybe I'll go over quickly the changes.
I think that would be good, because a lot of, yeah.
Yeah, and I just wanted, just to ask kind of a clarifying on that. I know you sent out several emails. The last email had revisions, those were the last revisions, was that correct? I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right document.
I think you're not going to find it online, because the document that I'm going to use tonight, I don't think we sent it out.
Okay, well, I have.
We all have a copy, you have a hard copy in front of you.
It's not going to be, okay, all right. All right, thank you for the clarification. No, no, I just wanted to make sure I was not looking at the wrong thing.
Yes.
Are there additional copies of this available for people who are here?
There's a pile right here.
Oh, okay, right here.
Yeah, because I have, I think you sent this out Fri-, last, yeah, last Friday, and then you have 2-216.
So what you all should have in your packet is a comparison of what we've got right now to what you've got last time. And the changes are involved, and the things that are not there are crossed out.
Okay.
So this stormwater bylaw revision came about because some of the development community had some concerns that it was just too difficult, too onerous, to go through the stormwater bylaw. There were some questions about the consulting engineer process, how that worked, that's really not what we're dealing with tonight, but there were underlying questions about what was in the bylaw, because both the engineers and the consulting engineers were really having a hard time making it work for single-family lots. So we formed a stormwater working group. Tricia was very, and Tricia Van Casey was very encouraging of us to do that. It was on the town side, it was Pat Galvin and myself, Bill Lindbacher and Frank Snow. The developers were Steve Yorclan, Mark Winchester, and Greg Morris. And we had Josh Merrill, Josh Boats, I'm sorry, Merrill Associates come to several of the meetings as well. And I believe we have four meetings of that stormwater working group. We've had four regular meeting discussions with the planning board, and then February 11, we opened a public hearing on this, and this is a continuation. The planning board's not required to have a public hearing on this, this is just something, you know, kind of frosting on the cake type of situation that we've got, where I think you just felt like it would be a good thing to hear this and to hear all the comments on it. January 26 was another important meeting, that was the Water Resources Committee, and we had the developers there, Greg Morris was there, and the Water Resource Committee, and Samantha Woods was there from the North South River Watershed Association. So, so I think there's been a lot of process behind it, and it's really resulted in some compromises that I think are the best that we can do to try to meet, you know, a number of different objectives with this bylaw, and some vetting of it as well. The changes from the last time, I think, let's see, if I look over to page four, there was a, there were some comments from the Water Resources Committee, they wanted some of the language tightened up on adoption of regulations. Some of the coastal interests in town wanted to have land subject to coastal storm flowage have its own performance standard, and they felt very strongly about that. So that's talking about when you've got a flooding situation and you're dealing with coastal flooding, you're not really talking about rainwater, you're just talking about seawater that's washing through people's lots. You want to be looking at that so you don't channelize it, you don't make erosion worse, you don't make flooding any worse than it has to be in flood damage. So, so we have some general language about that that's on page five at the bottom. Another piece that was added is actually up above that, under A3. This was added, it's about retaining the first one inch of stormwater on one or more acres, and that's from the, the town's federal requirements under the Niptis process, the Niptis permit that we have, which governs stormwater. The idea was to get that in this bylaw, as long as we're making changes to it anyway, it's just another performance standard that people have to meet, and that allows us to get through that Niptis permitting. So that's something that the DPW wanted to have in there, because this way we don't have to go back and, you know, revise the stormwater bylaw again. On the last page, the last couple pages, I think these are mostly administrative changes, except that on the very last page, there's a deadline of 12 months that, that remediation can be done. If there's some action that either the Conservation Commission or the planning board believes has to be taken to remediate a problem, somebody fills in a depression on their property and, you know, they don't care very much about stormwater, and that's just what they're doing, because they like the lot looking that way. The planning board can give them an order that they have to bring it back, and this just says that the work has to be done within 12 months from the date of whenever the violation was, which kind of makes sense. That was something that the Water Resources Committee wanted to see. And then the Water Resource Committee also had some concerns about fines, so we spell out that each day is considered a separate offense, and, you know, that was true anyway, but this kind of spells it out so that they, you know, they can see it. They also raised another point, which had to do with, how do you make sure that all this drainage infrastructure stays on the property and it doesn't get, like, removed? Some of the things that Steve was talking about at the last meeting with trees, and how do you make sure that they're not cut down? The Water Resource Commission really wants to have easements, and to have some legal way of making sure that those trees stay there. If they're there for drainage, they're there to protect the surrounding properties and the property that somebody's buying, you know, it seems like a pretty reasonable thing from my perspective, but, you know, I know there are a lot of perspectives in the room, so, you know, you might hear from other people about that. But they felt pretty strongly that that was really necessary to make sure that these things last, and they don't get removed or covered up with a patio, or, you know, a new parking area, or something that, you know, you totally don't want to be there.
To clarification, would that be an easement to the town? Or?
No, it would just, well.
Okay, I'm sorry to.
That's a legal question, I don't know the answer to.
Okay.
But it would require that this be maintained, you know, in perpetuity as a drainage area, you know, unless there's, you know, some other way they can, they can manage their property to not, you know, to not need it. You know, I'm sure there would, you know, you could put some language allowing them to come back to the planning board and get a new plan approved, or, you know, something to that effect.
Well, at this point, are there questions from the board?
I guess my question, just why I brought up, was, you know, who has the easement? But that would be, I guess, on a plan-by-plan basis?
I think it would all be the same, I mean, but it might be like a utility easement, you know, I mean, I guess that would go to, if it's, it could be like a, something like a drainage easement.
Right.
But easements are granted to somebody.
That's what I was saying, yeah.
Yeah, they usually are.
I need somebody to be granted, have this easement granted to.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, but, you know, I could look into it.
You know, but I think, I think even with, if you granted an easement to somebody.
Yeah.
Or some entity.
Yeah, maybe to the town.
You're still in the, you're still in the dry-bye inspection, you're still in the trust-me world.
Yeah.
Well, I'm thinking of some past things that have come before this board, where there was not an easement in place, and there were some trees that were mistakenly cut down, you know, if that, if there was an easement, who would be the sort of body, where would that easement be?
Well, the town is already charged with enforcing this bylaw. I mean, it's a town bylaw, there's going to be some enforcement language, you know, it's not like this bylaw is kind of in a vacuum. So there are people in, you know, in the planning office, in the conservation office, in the DPW, who would be concerned about stormwater going off, you know, into the, into the street, onto neighbors' properties, and I guess you would make the easement in favor of the town.
Okay. Okay.
Well, next, we can comment on that. With conservation projects in the jurisdiction of Conservation Commission, we have an order of conditions that's ongoing until the project is completed. We put in perpetual conditions, I don't know if this has been tested in court, but the order of conditions is on their deed, and then they write, and they said, they've done all these things, we've said, yeah, you've done, you've done it, but we feel that we can go on in perpetuity for some of the conditions, like you, you cannot, you know, get any closer to the river with any structure or something like that. So I don't know if this has that teeth right now, and I think that's what we're getting at, is getting it back at a rate of date to make sure that they maintain the basin they were supposed to maintain, something like that. But I, I don't know how other towns do that, but I think it's something we'd want to have.
Yeah, I was asking just really for clarification, not because I have a strong feeling one way or the other, I just was thinking, like, if, if I was a homeowner, you know, in that particular case, you know, who would you be granted the easement to?
Yeah, I believe it would be the town, because the town's going to enforce it. I'm not sure about whether, you know, the, the stormwater permit can have conditions in perpetuity or not.
Right, because under a subdivision, we put it with the homeowner association, and, you know, over time, they're supposed to monitor it, and we can deal with the homeowner association to make sure that their basin's maintained, but we don't really have anything in place for the single-family lot unless we think we need one, and then how do we do that?
Well, those, those types of stormwater, you know, structures are usually in easements on a subdivision, so.
Right, right, but for the single-family ones, what we're talking about now?
Yeah, I, I don't think I tell all the answers to your questions.
Okay. So that's something to, doesn't sound like that's something we're going to solve quickly here, but it sounds like we ought to do a little more work on that. Bill, anything else?
No.
Any questions?
I'm interested in what the public has to say.
I've got a couple.
Go ahead.
First, back to Pat, what do you do if somebody's got wetlands on their property and there's a restriction against building within 50 feet or disturbing within 100 feet, whatever the orders of condition might say? Isn't it kind of the same thing?
Right, I mean, some things we can do under the order of conditions, other things are just violation of a state bylaw, and a state law or a local bylaw, so we have enforcement powers to do that, and usually it's a violation letter looking for voluntary compliance, like replant an area or something. Other times it's an enforcement order, you know, we can involve the state law, fine them.
But there's no easements involved?
No, there is not an easement.
But the order of condition gets recorded, though.
During the order of condition, when that's in place, it's recorded, and we can go on, we do have an easement, but there's no order of conditions.
No, you do.
But when it closes up, a certificate of compliance, we say we have perpetual conditions that are in place, but I don't know if in a court of law, we could assume there's an easement, go on some property, it might have to be, look from the neighbor's yard or something.
So it seems similar in, in the sense that, you know, there's some thought to be, to be given to how that might work.
Right.
Okay, good. A couple of other things that, just quickly reading this, may or may not be problems, but under 8B, which is talking about performance standards in, in areas of coastal flooding, use of solid foundations and fill so as to deflect, reflect, or redirect wave energy to decrease or channelize floodwater. While that's a good thought, it's completely counter to what FEMA would have you do in velocity and even A zones, and that is to have open foundations as opposed to solid foundations. So I don't, I don't know if there's a potential conflict there.
Well, no, this is, I think it's tricky to read it, it says.
It may include limits on.
Yeah.
Oh, so you're going to limit that?
They're saying the standards may include these things, right? They're not even saying they will, they're just saying they may.
Okay, okay.
So I think it, it leaves fairly open.
Yeah.
To creating the actual standards, right?
Yeah, I mean, there is, there's a conflict between this design and what actually happens on the ground, I think, because there were some pretty severe erosion this past storm on Turner and Oceanside, in areas where the oceanfront structures had been raised. Then the land area and, to a certain degree, the homes across the street were more subject to, to wash over than they had previously been. So it's just, again, something to think about.
I don't know that we can necessarily solve that one.
No, no, I'm just, like I say, I'm bringing it up.
The interesting about that, what you mentioned, may, we may put them in there, that may be something that's coming from the state, with coastal zone management, with DDP, they are trying to develop upon standards for land subject to coastal storm flow, so any floods on it, they may come up with language about, so much of the bottom floor must be open to allow pass-through floodwaters, so I think there's something coming on that.
Okay, yeah, good, good. Then I, then I wanted to clarify on orders on the last page, page seven, A1A. I'm not sure the permitting authority would have the right to actually stop construction on a building. You certainly have the authority, I would think, to stop construction on aspects of the stormwater control system, but it's, it's a little unclear to me whether this means the entire project can be shut down by the permitting authority.
I think it's just the parts that, of the project that handles stormwater.
Yeah.
So it wouldn't be the building, it would be, you know.
The infiltration structure, the grading, the, that, yeah, that's good, that's what I would assume.
How does that apply to erosion control measures?
Well, someone doesn't have any, and they're proceeding to do a lot of work, I think we have to try to shut them down.
Right, you would try to shut down the construction until the erosion control measures were installed.
Yeah.
Yeah, so that is kind of what you're talking about here.
Well, usually, you know, what's causing the erosion is grading, and, you know, could be excavating for a house, but not actually, you know, building the house itself, I mean, just excavating and getting ready to put the foundation in, but not the actual pouring of the foundation.
I mean, certainly anything to do with erosion control or, or runoff is within the province of, of, you know, whoever's doing, doing that part of this.
I think we want to have something like that, because a lot of times the complaints that we get in the office have to do with erosion.
Yep, 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 and I totally agree, yeah, that's, that's absolutely right. And then on two, maybe should read if the enforcing body as opposed to if the enforcing person?
Sure, that sounds good.
That's all I have.
Bob?
No, most of them, curious to hear.
I've got a couple of follow-up questions. Last time we talked, there was some discussion about two additional concepts that don't appear to have made it here, and I'd just, I'd just like to know kind of what happened. One, one was about some kind of default design for stormwater for single-family homes. We were talking about interceptors, et cetera, so that was one.
Infiltrators for roof drainage.
Right, and the other was about language that would limit the ability to discharge onto a public or private way. So I'm just wondering if the working group or the, the other stakeholders actually discussed either one of those.
No, I started trying to think about the default design, and I think where you were on that was that as long as there were roof infiltrators added, that the trigger could go up to 20,000 square feet. I think that's what you all had talked about, so.
Yeah, it was kind of a general concept that we were talking about, and I think, I think that was raised kind of at the end, is, you know, is there a way to sort of, you know, not be as concerned about the, the square footage if there's some kind of default design for stormwater management?
Yeah.
So that wasn't addressed, okay. Was there any discussion about discharge on the public and private ways?
Well, we're already controlling that, I mean, because that's off-site stormwater, so that's, that's already.
So there's no need to address that here?
I don't think there's any.
Okay.
There is a bylaw, there is a bylaw that prevents discharge onto the public way. It's a bylaw that probably needs to be used.
Well, we've been in a situation where there is discharge to a public way now, and the issue would be you couldn't increase that, right? Because the lot, the lots could be discharging now.
It's been required a number of years, and it had more to do with the ice and general winter conditions, and creating a public hazard safety capital.
So there are no lots that get developed that are, that when it rains, discharge onto a public way right now?
Technically.
That's a general bylaw already, so where this is a general bylaw, do you want to just repeat it and say you can't discharge into a public?
No, I was, it was raised last time, so I wanted to know if anybody had addressed it, and this addresses it. And then I had, so that the retention of the first one inch of stormwater is a federal requirement?
Yes.
Is that, has that become the de facto standard now? I mean, we were talking about, you know, we sort of eliminated the 100-year storm kind of criteria, is that the criteria now?
That's the federal criteria, but it's only for lots of an acre or more, so it's.
For an acre or more.
That includes a lot of Situate.
Oh, okay, so these performance standards only apply to the. So, these performance standards only apply to a 40,000-plus stormwater permit? Okay.
Does it disturb a seven acre?
No, it's a lot, actually. I believe it's a lot.
It's a lot.
I took the words verbatim from...
Do you have this written?
Yeah, from Ty and Bond had a worksheet that they used on this. I'm assuming they got the language right.
Might have to check that.
So, just on, it just might be wording on six, but you've got the two paragraphs, the two sentences addressing both Planning Board and Conservation Commission standards?
Mm-hmm.
I'm not sure I'm following. It says all regulations shall be adopted and transmitted to the Planning Board. But the Planning Board's adopting regulations.
That's just after they're adopted, so we can get them and put them into, you know, put them into one regulation, so we have one set of regulations for the Planning Board and the CONCON.
Oh, is this referring to the Conservation Commission regulations?
I'm picturing them adopting their own, you know, possibly adopting their own stormwater regulations. And I think there ought to be one place where they're together, where the ones that the Planning Board adopts and the one that the CONCON adopts are in one set of regulations.
Okay.
I think we've become the keeper of the bylaw. We complete the collective person for the restrictions and the conditions.
Yeah, that's what we've done before, but, you know, practically speaking, you might have each board, you know, adopting things on their own.
Yeah, I think for single-family lots, I think if they would like to have the same language as you have, we may add some to a sentence and say it's resource areas in addition to letting properties or public ways resource areas that you be protecting. But I don't think we want to have two separate things that may get more confusing. I think it's...
One set of regulations, right?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't get that out of that sentence, but, okay. Those were my questions for the moment. We've got, Pat, do you have anything else you want to add? I mean, we're gonna open it up for public comment at this point, but I'll start with you if you would like.
Well, then, I'll let people say. I have a couple of things, but I'd like to hear if somebody has a comment.
Okay. So, do we have others? Other public comments?
I'd love to go last.
You're all fighting to go last.
Samantha Woods, Washington State Rivers Watershed Association. Well, as you recall, about eight years ago, we were here doing, getting this bylaw put in place, and, you know, obviously, the Watershed Association was a big supporter of putting this bylaw in place. And we believe very strongly that communities need to address stormwater. Most of our water bodies, surface water bodies, are impacted by stormwater runoff pollution. In Situate, you also have stressed watershed in terms of your water quantity, and so any bit of water that we can recycle back into the ground, capture, retain, treat, is a good thing for the health of your water supply and for the health of the surface waters in your community. So, when this bylaw has been opened up, you know, the administrative changes, we don't really have any comments on, and whatever makes it easier for people to get through the process of the town to deal with that, I think we don't have any concerns about. The one major concern we have is increasing the threshold for the trigger from 15,000 to 18,000 or 20,000, depending on who you're speaking to. The lower the threshold, the more people that will, you know, more development that will be caught through the review process, the more opportunity you'll have for recharging water and clean and not exacerbating already existing problems in terms of flooding, in terms of water quality, and in terms of not having your groundwater recharged and your water supply recharged. So, we're not in favor of loosening that provision. There is no standard out there for this. This is something that each town has to kind of grapple with. There are towns that have done 40,000 square feet, like the town of Norland, but there are also towns like the town of Cohasset who have done 5,000 and actually have anything over 500 square feet, it's supposed to run administrative review process. So, between 500 square feet and 5,000 square feet, in Cohasset, they're having a review process, and then they have a 5,000 square feet. Massachusetts Guidance, this is 5,000 square feet. Wood Island uses 10,000 square feet. Maryland uses 5,000 square feet, you know, but there are also 40,000 square feet out there, too. And I think a lot of it just has to do with how protective you want to be of your resources. And as the Watershed Association, it's our job to tell you, your water resources are already stressed, and we would not recommend you making them more stressed. And the more that you can bring people into compliance and bring new development into compliance with stormwater, the better for everybody. The bylaw is meant to protect all of the existing owners, the existing resources, and hopefully bring in redevelopment so that we can get houses that are contributing to runoff into the roads and into your stormwater systems to better manage that. With climate change, it's only going to get worse. The storms are increasing in their severity, and your town needs to be thinking further ahead as it is with its coastline. This is equally, if not as. So, that's really our major concern with it. I don't, we're not going to support a change in that at the town meeting. So, I've written a comment about it. I'm sure Mr. Biarco and Mr. Kellivers have something else to say about it. I don't know if there's another compromise that can help make it less onerous. As I said, there are other places that do some kind of administrative review process that might be something to look at. I think Westwood was another town that I looked at that had something similar or lower, you know? So, not everybody has to go full, complete, but that you at least have people coming through the door and to see what they're proposing before you say, well, no, that really is something that we need to get engineering permitting done on.
Could I ask a couple, just clarifying questions? You made a statement that the mass guidance is 5,000 square feet. What is that? What is the mass guidance? Where does that come from?
It's a smart growth toolkit from ABC, that's one area thing, that has guidance in terms of model bylaws. One was written by Worsley, but, so, 5,000 square feet. Again, it's not written in stone, but that's what they said in the bylaw. This is the model for towns to use. As I said, towns changed that. Some have gone lower, been more protective, for whatever their particular reasons are. Some have been less restrictive. And again, my concern for the town of Situate is the North River, the Harriet River, the First Harriet Brook, your water supply. Your Situate Harbor's not within our watershed, but I'm sure that your town members care about it. And all of the things that happen on the land drain into these water bodies. And if we don't capture and treat them, they carry all the pollution that is put on the surface of the roads with them. And ultimately, you become responsible for that. The public becomes responsible for that. So, by not asking property owners to deal with it on their side or by, you're transferring that to the public, in our opinion.
Who's next?
I have a question on that. I was wondering if there's good examples of towns that have chosen which projects could go through a more simple administrative review and which projects would trigger the full engineering calculations? Because I think part of it is trying to get at individual homeowners, do we want to put a burden of a $10,000 review on them? If there was a town in Situate, we have a whole bunch of categories that would trigger the full review, but there's a bunch of other ones that could be done more simple.
I would suggest going to Cohasset and doing, you know, what they've done with theirs, 500 to, I mean, again, you might change those thresholds. But they've had that in place for years now, and seemingly, there's still development going on in Cohasset, and life has moved on. People are developing there. So, maybe you could look at that as an example and see what kind of guidance they give for just the administrative approval process. So, you could, you know, lessen the burden.
Like, or if your town has a lot of ledge, or if you have an open source reservoir, I mean, there are all sorts of things, like, well, then you want a larger or smaller thing that we category, you know, kick it into gear. If you have ledge, a lot of ledge in a town, maybe they would want to go with, you know, or you would, you know, 4,000, 5,000, you know?
That's probably Cohasset, I think.
Yeah, right.
Cohasset's got a lot of ledge and an open reservoir. You have an open reservoir, you have to...
I mean, I feel like picking 18...
You've got some ledge around here, too.
Unfortunately, yeah. As I said, it's on the spectrum between 5,000 and 40,000. You know, we would like it even more, but, you know, I understand that there has to be a balance between what people, with the process that they have to go through is. So, I would recommend looking at Cohasset and seeing what they do for that administrative approval and see if that is a way to bridge the gap between 15 and 20.
Other comments? Yes?
I'd like to make some comments, actually. I think I helped come here today after listening to you folks. I appreciate having this hearing.
Yeah.
My name is John Barron. I live at 14 Bayberry Road. I'm an approximately 20-year resident of Situate. I've lived in the same house the entire time. A little background, my house was built in 1875. It's one of the first houses in the Minot area, from my understanding. It was built on a piece of property that was safe and sound from the water, and I've found it to be that way ever since. I've always, when I bought the place, I've always thought that the biggest threat coming at me was going to be coming from FEMA and from the water coming in. I've been the personal victim of a lack of enforcement and a lack of bylaw over those 20 years, or actually, the last eight years of that time. I'd like to relay my story to you, if it's okay.
Sure.
Couple of things. I believe very strongly that the board should err more on the side of enforcement than leniency. I believe the reduction that you're making in terms of the impact, or the increase in the impact associated with the lot has, actually would, I don't know if there's many people like me, maybe the impact of me is too late, but I want to preserve and protect other people. I've been that victim because I have a 20,000-square-foot acre lot next to me that was vacant, vacant forever, actually. This is law as it was deemed buildable. Before, the town incorporated a clearcut law, that entire, right before, actually, because there's knowledgeable, there's knowledgeable people here that want to get around the system. It's really, the enforcement is all about the builders. It's not the builders that behave the law and are respectful for the community, they're the builders that aren't, that want to get around the law, but are the ones that I'm most concerned with. So, in my particular situation, before the, months or weeks before the clearcut law was implemented, the entire lot was clearcut. Of course, that created a significant hardship on me. All the trees that were there to soak up that water are no longer there. Puddling and things like that happened on the lot. That really didn't have a significant effect on me. It wasn't until the FEMA, new FEMA laws came out, where the height of the elevation on my property for FEMA went from 12 to 15, and the lot next door, which is down at 12 and that kind of elevation, that's when the builder came in and put in seven feet across 75% of the property of fill. Seven feet of fill, because FEMA said that his house now needs to be at this height. Wow, that's amazing. There's no enforcement within the town for that kind of activity, because I went to the building. There's no official building permit here. We have no enforcement. I went to CONCON. CONCON says, your property's in, we have complete control of your property. His property, mm-mm, we have no control over that. I even went to the Board of Health, because this gentleman is bringing in dirty fill, fill that I have samples of that come from his old construction projects. It has glass and brick and really nasty things inside of it he's burying inside this. I went to the Board of Health. They said, we have no jurisdiction. You've got to go to the state, and you've got to spend money to do testing on that soil in order to prove that it's contaminated. Again, I don't want to make this about myself, but these are the type of things that have happened on this property and continue to happen on this property for lack of enforcement. The biggest concern that I have is this is a 20,000-square-foot lot. He's modified, to my estimation, 100% of it. If you reduce this down to 18,000 square feet, this lets this builder do whatever he wants to almost every piece of property inside of Minot. Now, you might say there's not many properties like that in Minot, but I would contend with you that your job is also to protect me, the landowner, the 20-year person that's been there that has a piece of property. Now, let me talk to you a little bit about the effects that these violations have had on my property. They've had, it's created a velocity of water inside of my property that I just can't simply control. He's pushed all of, six feet high, all the way across his property for a half acre, okay? Almost. Last 10 feet are kept open because of something he's trying to get around, right? But that surge of water has undermined my pool, has undermined my fencing, has caused me to actually ask, can the town do anything for me? And the town has responded, you need to get a lawyer. So, I'm concerned about people like me that don't want to go out and get a lawyer to be protected over these kind of things that are happening on my property. I want enforcement. I want it to be stronger. I want anybody on the board to answer me the question, why shouldn't anybody building a new piece of property, new home, next to me, a house that's been there 150 years, excuse me, I might be overestimating that, close to 150 years, why shouldn't they be required to do the right things to protect me? And that's what I'm concerned with on this board. I want more leniency. I want less builders getting around the issues. I want less people getting around these things. I want more protection for me as a homeowner. Whether it's too late to protect my home, and I'm going to have to invest thousands of dollars to protect myself from this builder, that's fine. But I'm here today because you guys opened the hearing up, and I want to protect everybody else in this town. I don't want these builders to continue running these things. It's not right, and it's not right for people that have been here for 20 years. Thank you all very much for your time. I really appreciate the job you did.
Thank you. Other comments? You're getting close to being last. So, who's going to? Yes?
Paul Scott, 359 Countryway in Situate. I apologize for coming late, but I've been brought on board by the Conservation Commission to assist them as project coordinator in developing the driveways and parking lots to various pieces of land that they've acquired over the years to provide access to the trails that these lanes are available. My concern is, under the definition of disturbance, any constructional land disturbance on vacant land, but this bylaw will apply to the Conservation Commission at the time we do get to construct these driveways, the gravel driveways, gravel driveways. I think it'd be known, most of these properties that they have acquired, they'll be in the West End, all of them will be in the West End, which drivers are very large parcels, open air, open spaces, of course, for this concern. I talked to Pat earlier. As I say, I apologize for coming late, but I've just been brought on board. I was reading Mr. May, was somewhat concerned about that.
I think for some of these, too, there's adjacent wetlands, so it would be triggered under a notice and intent or a question determined from us.
Right, if it's in the buffer zone or whatever, the CONCON's going to address that, right?
Right. There's one project, one, there's four sites. The Crosby Project does involve wetlands, and it's been a filing, rules of condition... The Crosby project does involve wetlands and it's been a filing, a loser condition issue and so forth. The others, to the best of my knowledge, were not involved in wetlands.
I guess without looking at the specifics, I don't know that I could opine on that except that, you know, whether it's a public or private piece of land, the bylaws apply, right? And so if it trips a trigger somewhere, then it would apply.
If it's a gravel road, you're probably gravel driveway, you're probably going to get by with that being considered pervious, so you probably wouldn't need to put in a lot of drainage. But on the other hand, I think the town would want to have the same standard applied to everything. And, you know, why, just because it's, I mean, you're not paving the road, so you're already thinking about stormwater, it would seem. So, yeah, so to say that this, you know, I mean, there's no permitting fee yet, there's no application fee yet, I mean, it would just be a question of providing some type of a plan and, you know, the 15,000 to 40,000 square foot disturbance goes through the planning board or the Concom offices. It doesn't go for a public hearing. You know, we consent it for consulting engineer review, we might do that, we might not do that if it looks like it's all going to be pervious anyway. But we might have them just look at it quickly and see if they think any engineering is required. But where it's not going to have impervious surface, you know, probably going to have a limited amount of stormwater infrastructure that would have to be put in.
And I can appreciate that the town should comply as well as any private developer. It's, my concern is one of cost to the Commission for this whole process. And if there was a way, I think Pat hit on it earlier, there's way in terms of rules and regs that we can still go through some of the process and show you what we're doing in the design that will be passed in and that's used in the design. So it's an issue we can, it just came to me today and I haven't really talked to the Commission officers. I'm going to do a talk about later.
We had this conversation last time when Steve was here and the 15,000 square foot trigger is a, is a trigger that, that is, sort of throws in some additional process, right? But whether you're disturbing 15,000 or not, the criteria is still the same, right? In other words, you know, you're still supposed to keep the stormwater on the lot and not increase the stormwater flow to the neighboring properties, whether it's 15, whether it's 14,000 or 16,000, right? The trigger triggers some additional, this is my understanding, and so correct me if I'm wrong, triggers some additional rigor, if you will, in the evaluation requiring some addition, some calculations that are stamped by a professional engineer and stuff, right? But the criteria is the same regardless of whether you're below or above that, that threshold.
It might also be like so many other things in this town where you can find someone to volunteer their, their time, you know, volunteer, you know, ten truckloads of gravel. Maybe you could get some engineer to volunteer their time to do some plans. I mean, it could be anything terribly complicated.
Was that a backhanded diss of an engineer?
What are the four properties?
They do all sorts of good stuff that I need to get permits for.
They want to have a parking lot, Bates Lane.
Bates and Crosby. Who are the other, what were the, what were the four properties?
Crosby, Bates Lane, the Gales to Higgins and Damon.
Okay.
And again, very large parcels.
Yeah.
It's going to be no more than 10-foot road, gravel road, and then a parking lot for some of the vehicles.
Perfect demonstration project. I'll get you a grand.
Yes, Ann.
When did we enact stormwater in Citrus?
2012.
2008, okay, which was eight years ago, correct?
Eight years. Yeah, but we didn't have regulations until 2010.
2010.
Even so, even so, and I think I've stated before, my biggest concern about stormwater, any type of water on somebody's lot should not in any way, shape or form affect someone else. I mean, that is common sense, which sometimes I think has left the building. But that said, and this is a situation, and I really feel for this individual, he should not be putting up with this. It's wrong. It's patently wrong. And if we have had, regardless of regulations, you know, it's one of these things that, well, he said and then he said and so nothing happens. And that's what people get upset about. We can have all of these regulations, they're not worth the power of the, the paper that they're written on unless we are willing to step up to the plate and actually do the enforcement aspect of it. And if we had the regulations six years ago and this gentleman is talking about things that have been going on for the last 80 years, something should have kicked in. Somebody should have taken responsibility. And I don't understand why that hasn't happened. I really don't and I don't think that it can be answered at this meeting.
I don't think it can.
It can't be, but it's still, I think that the whole purpose of stormwater is, as Samantha has aptly pointed out, is recharge and to make sure that there is no discharge on public ways, private ways, on your next door neighbor's property.
Well, I think one thing that these changes will do to help is that at least there's a line that's, that's mentioned. I mean, how enforceable it is, is another question. We'll have to do a lot of work and I understand there's some issue where this has to go through the police department and they have to be on board with all the work that they have to do to get this thing to kick in. But that's a little above my role.
Basically, I understand that.
But if you don't have the language, then it's never going to happen.
Right.
So hopefully we get this and we get a few steps closer, but people like this man are why this bylaw was passed in the first place. And I've been asked, well, you know, what led to this bylaw? How did this happen? Why did we do this? What role did MAPC have and were they just, you know, being overzealous or whatever? The reason that this bylaw was really passed was because we were getting complaints like this all the time. Every week we'd have a complaint like this. And I don't know this man, don't think we've ever met before.
But that's okay.
Okay. I thought you were going to say that. But in any case, these are the people that this was designed to help in the first place. It has not done a perfect job, you're absolutely right on that, but there are a lot of homes that are getting some type of drainage on their lot that they wouldn't have got otherwise if it hadn't been for this bylaw. So I think it's, it's doing something. Is it costing something? Yes, it is. But we have high groundwater, we have a lot of glacial till, tough soils, tough conditions to work in, yeah.
I mean, it is what it is, but there has to be some type of remediation in terms of when something goes wrong. And I know that we have here that it has to be fixed within 12 months, but for the poor soul that's living next door to it, or the ice skating rink on the street, 12 months seems like an inordinate amount of time.
Well, this says no more than 12 months, right? I mean, I'm presuming we could set a compliance schedule for somebody and if you tell me if that's.
Well, if you want to make it shorter, then, you know, I mean, I think that's something that I need to know. This came from the Water Resource Commission, but, you know, you can certainly make it, you know, six months.
Well, I guess I wouldn't, I wouldn't say that. I would say that, that, you know, you've sort of set the outside limit for when somebody has to comply, right?
Yeah.
But on a case-by-case basis, it seems like we should have the ability to evaluate what needs to be done and set a schedule that's inside 12 months, if it can be done inside 12 months, right?
Yeah.
I don't know if that means we have to write something different in here or not, but that's typically kind of what you would expect, right?
Yeah. Well, it says no more than 12 months.
Right.
So that's, you can't possibly make it any more than that. You could make it three months, you know, make it whatever you want to make it.
This has given us more enforcement capability than we had.
Steve, I have a question.
Yes.
To point to Ann, I think the way it's supposed to work is if they come in and they're going to be disturbing that much, they come and they get the permit. And I think it's up to us to make sure it was constructed correctly by the end. And, you know, a couple of years later, they come back and say, I'm all done, now I want to just take it off my deed. If we go out there and the elevation's different or if it's dirty fill or if there's something like that, we shouldn't be signing off on it. They should be forced to correct it before they go any further. And we have three right now that have done that, where it ended up being a tremendous slop into somebody's yard and we said, gee, according to the original plan, it was going to be half this size. So he's had to rip it out and do it. So I think this bylaw is intending to get out these kinds of situations. And, you know, what's happening with the house, that's an unfortunate situation, but I think we're trying to get away from that by doing these, we're just trying to figure out what triggers it and, you know, it's tricky, but I think you're right, they should enforce it.
Absolutely. Absolutely. And, you know, if you find someone that has chosen to, you know, sometimes it's easy to say, oh, I'm so sorry, but there has, there has to be some accountability. People need to be accountable for what they don't do, what they're supposed to do.
Other comments?
The only other comment that I would make.
Are you still waiting to be last? Okay, so I'm going to hold on.
The only other comment that I would make on this is my issue is ongoing. There is continued dirty fill, even piled right up there. So I'm not sure, isn't there something in the, well, you can say enough's enough, can we stop, can we stop doing it? You know what I mean? There has to be some sort of, he's, he's inside of a loophole here. He doesn't have an active building permit. He's not, he's got no jurisdiction and he's filling a lot with dirty fill and stacking it up high over his, over my head. There has to be some sort of something in this bylaw that you put in to at least stop the process, you know what I mean? Even if he's grandfathered in because he started this process before you guys started regulating this stuff, there has to be some sort of gate. I would, I would also offer any of the board to come down and do a field trip to my house and I will show you the impact and just the utter disregard for the neighborhood and the street.
What address, Bayberry, are you?
14 Bayberry Road is my address and the address supposedly is 8 Bayberry Road. It's not been built on yet.
Isn't there Marsh out there?
There is Marsh on the other side, on the odd side. I'm on the inner side of Bayberry.
And he's on the inner side?
Yeah. Thank you all very much.
Samantha. To reiterate that you can't have accountability unless you have a process that people go through in which they dictate to you what they're planning to do and then you have some way to hold them to it. And again, if you change the triggers for that, you're going to lose some people who might potentially impact others. And, you know, yes, it does cost money to make a plan, get engineers to determine whether or not, how you treat that water. But that is how you have accountability so that this situation has some remediation.
Get the last word.
First, if I can through the chair, I'd like to ask the gentleman a question over the corner is if that particular lot that was next to you was filled 15,000 square feet of it or 18,000 square feet of it, would it make a difference if they left 2,000 square feet the way it was originally?
Well, I guess I'd have to answer the question to say that, first of all, you have an aesthetic issue here, right? You have a fence, right?
Well, when I'm talking about static stuff.
Well, okay, but I just need to explain the situation, right? You have a fence and now you have fill over the top of the fence, right? So if you're saying if he went all the way to the end, then he'd be pushing the water into three people's yards instead of just funneling it to me, right? So because he chose to take 75% of his property, all of that funnel only comes to me, right? Does that answer your question?
So my question was, would it affect you if he only disturbed 15,000 square feet rather than 20,000?
100% because the effect is the clear cut. The effect is the velocity he's creating by adding that fill in here and the effect is also the non-remediation of that, of that velocity of the water. So all three of those, yes, sir.
So whether it was 15 or 20, wouldn't it make a difference? It'd still be affected?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're, I'm sorry, you're trying to back me into an answer. Yeah, let me, no, let me just answer the question to heart. If you change this from 15,000 to 18,000, this gentleman now gets to cover 90% of his property. I believe it should be more like 5,000. I believe this gentleman should have come to the board with a plan to remediate that water before he even started doing any fill, okay? That's my belief.
So do you think it should be zero?
Yeah, well, zero is kind of seems a little unreasonable. I would look to something like a Cohasset where it's 5,000 square.
Cohasset's 500.
500 to 5,000 for administrative approval.
You're asking a non, you're asking a non-expert to answer an expert's question. I'm simply saying that we have a problem with enforcement and leniency and I'd like both of those addressed in my message.
And to take that to heart, that's exactly what I'm talking about. It doesn't matter if it's 15 or it's 18 or it's 20. Your issue is enforcement.
Or five.
Or five. Or zero. The issue is enforcement, okay? It's whether it gets enforced or not enforced.
And we're moving the other way. We're moving the other way down the spectrum of leniency. We should be going the other way. We should be going closer to 5,000, not 18,000, okay?
And I've changed my view on this since I started. I personally think we should go to zero square feet because we should be the strictest in the state, okay? We should try and get everybody we possibly can get under this bylaw, okay? Whether they put one drop of water or a million gallons on somebody's property, I think everybody should have to go through this process. I think it should include the 7,000 houses that are in the town of Citrus because that makes up probably 95% of the development that's going to happen in this town. But instead of doing that, looks like what we want to do is we want to go after the builder who wants to build the last 5% of the town to take care of the burden for the 95% or whatever the percentage is of homes that are existing in town. If you really want to correct the problem, go after everybody, okay? Because it would be the same if you filled your home and pushed it onto an empty lot, right? You wouldn't want to do that. You wouldn't want to push your water onto an empty lot.
I would never do that.
Okay, no existing home would ever do that, okay? Let me tell you, most of the water that goes onto the vacant lots is coming from developed lots, okay? So now the vacant lots are the ones that are going to pick up the burden of all the water that's coming from the impervious areas that are created by the development that's already here, okay? This bylaw, when it was enacted, all right, and again, and I'm the one that's been pushing this thing, okay? You have a right to go after your neighbor, whether this bylaw's in place or not in place. You have a right to go after your neighbor. If they're putting water in your property, you've got a torque against that person and you can go after them, okay? And I understand you don't spend the money to go do that. I get it. And now the town should do it.
And they know that, though, sir. You understand.
But he's got a right to be able to go and do that, just as anybody on the board if somebody's putting water on their properties, okay? There are some great changes in this bylaw that we went through in the committee and we did, we spent a lot of time, Laura spent a tremendous amount of time on this, Pat as well, at these meetings. There's a lot of good things in here now that the town needs and they need the enforcement. I get what you're saying, I get what you're saying over there. There has to be enforcement, okay? It's not always the developer that's doing it, okay? It can be a homeowner that's doing it. Same with filling wetlands. A lot of them are just homeowners. They just go out and they do these things. And if you can get the enforcement, Pat will tell you, he has enforcement orders, probably almost every other week now, he's dealing with enforcement orders, okay? I would guess the majority of those come from homeowners, not from developers. Because the developers understand a little bit more about what they're supposed to do, most developers, okay? So I don't want to put the burden on, on all the developers. If there's a bad developer or a bad builder out there, you know what? They should pay the price. Whatever happens, they should pay the price for that. I got involved in this a lot because of the costs to properly design one of these systems under the criteria that people had to meet and just the expense that you had to go through for the studies. Paul just talked about, is the town going to have to go through this for a parking lot? I'll bet you can probably build those parking lots for 10 grand a piece, okay? Bring the gravel in, spread it out, 10 grand, okay? If he's subject to this, I'll bet you his study to find out if he can build a parking lot costs him more than what the parking lot's going to cost, okay? And I know, because I've spent up to $15,000 to design a system on a And I know, because I've spent up to $15,000 to design a system on a single-family home site where we don't have a water problem, and we're not gonna have a water problem because it's gonna be designed properly, okay? With or without the stormwater bylaw, it's still gonna be designed properly. So that's the way I want to have my job done, okay? So all the enforcement stuff is great. The thresholds on square footage, you know what? They made a difference to me before. They don't make a difference now. Steve, you hit it right on the head. We have to have the default in there. Everyone who's building a new house should put infiltrators in the ground, and they all should be above the groundwater elevation. So they're empty when there's no storm, and they're full when there's a storm, okay? The amount of those that you put in should be up to the engineer. The engineer should look at it and say, "You got bad soil here. You might need six or eight infiltrators, okay, for each of the roof leaves." That's it. It's done. Put the infiltrators in. You don't need to know what a 100-year storm is gonna happen, or a 25-year storm is gonna happen. He just calculates, get the water back into the ground, like Samantha's saying. Get infiltration in there. Get what you can. But you've got a lot of sites where you can't really get much infiltration. I mean, we're talking new sites for new construction. This also applies to people who, you might want to put a garage on your house, okay? Certainly don't want to spend $15,000 to do a study to see if you can have your garage and then build a system that might cost you 25,000.
I did. What do you mean?
You spent 15,000?
I renovated, I spent hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to renovate my house.
Did you come under the stormwater bylaw?
Uh, no.
Okay. All right. So tack on another $15,000 to the stormwater bylaw. But if he's on a site that's a half an acre, okay, and he's gotta design a system that might cost him 20,000, 25,000 more in the ground, just put it in there, it's ridiculous for these small lots. He's never gonna produce enough water to worry about that, okay? And this board gets it. I mean, I'm not talking for the first time about this whole thing. I'm gonna say 95% of what's in here is good. I'm gonna say that the regulations, more than the bylaw, are gonna be even more important. So once the changes go through here, that we've got implemented here, then the work starts, because it really starts around how much design work do you have to do? So this is kind of like the tip of the iceberg, and we have to get the design work done properly. So again, I'm not gonna fight about the 18, 20, whatever. The default's more important to me, because I don't put infiltrators in anyways, and I think any good builder should put the infiltrators in. And I think that gives the town something without overburdening a lot of these smaller lots that are there. Maximum feasible upgrade stuff that we do with this, the language is almost the same as in Title V, where you do a maximum feasible upgrade. You're dealing with septic water, okay? This bylaw deals with clean water. These are rainwater, okay? And it's just been way too strict as compared to what they had allowed in Title V. So this stuff is now in here. I mean, the maximum feasible upgrade stuff is in there, and it will follow through to the regulations. So this is leaps and bounds better than anything that we've had yet. Again, you know, you can go back and forth with each individual about a specific item that's happened, or one thing that's in the bylaw. I think we just gotta keep focused that this bylaw has to change, and this is the best we're gonna get, I think, at this point.
Thank you.
Follow-up question?
Yes.
Where did the, that threshold, the change, like, was that suggested, or how did that come about?
Which one?
Well, I'm sorry. From 15 to 18.
It was actually, it was, yeah, 15,000. I actually came up with, I talked to a few people. They talked about possibly going to 40,000 square feet. The problem, if you have a 40,000-square-foot lot, it's very easy to do these systems if you're on a 40,000-square-foot lot. You've got a lot of area around. The smaller the lot gets, the tougher it is to handle that, and you have less rainwater on the smaller lots. So I think I was probably the first one to say, "Why don't we just go to 20,000 instead of 15,000, instead of 40,000?" I said, "Let's just go with 20,000 square feet." And you get into the clearing on the lots, and what's gonna happen if you clear? If you save a tree, is it gonna end up affecting the stormwater, you know, in a major way? I have an issue with leaving a small portion of the lot, whether it's 2,000 square feet or whatever, as being left in a vacant state, just because of personal experiences with what I'm dealing with. I would rather go in and clear it and re-landscape it with something nice. And I just don't want to do a $15,000 study to tell me that I gotta go put some trees in. I'd rather just put the trees in. So I think it should deal more in the regulation end with impervious areas and dealing with that. So I went to the 20. I think Laura, correct me if I'm wrong, I think Tricia's actually the one that said, "Why don't we go with 18?" I know you were involved with adding up a number of permits where people would be subject to this bylaw or not subject to the bylaw. And I would assume the intent was to still try and catch as many people as you can to bring them in front of you and not lessen that. And I think you want to keep as many people coming in front of you as you can. Again, it's not whether somebody comes in front of you or doesn't come in front of you. It's what they have to do when they get here. I mean, every new house should do something with their stormwater. I wouldn't dispute that at all. But to go through the burden that we went through on the site that we had is, nobody should have to go through that. Nobody should have to put in 156 infiltrators to put a single-family driveway in and have a site that costs $100,000 to take care of a storm event that happens once in 100 years. Or now I've been told it might happen five times in 100 years. Well, you know what? If it's for a couple of hours, five times in 100 years, in that storm event, everyone's getting wet. That's what happens. Everyone gets wet. If you have an issue where you're getting wet when you don't have those storm events, that's a big issue. That is a tremendous issue that needs to be taken care of. But this bylaw is dealing with events that might technically happen once in 100 years for a couple of hours. So you shouldn't have to spend 50 or $100,000 to take care of that rainwater and store it all when it's only there one day for 100 years, for a couple of hours. That's just, it's crazy. No one should have to do that. And again, we do a lot of subdivisions. We have a whole different set of regulations we have to go by when we do subdivisions. But we have the area to handle it. We can build larger detention basins. We have to treat all the water, but you're dealing with subdivision roadways and a lot more construction that's involved, all the neptus permit stuff. We have to meet all of that stuff. Even some of the common driveways we do still has to meet that. This is specifically, and the reason I went after this, it's specifically the one little single-family home that somebody wants to build, and they're being tremendously burdened by what's in place on this now. And if it's proper engineering, your thing shouldn't happen, okay? If it's proper engineering on that particular site, it should be taken care of. And I just think that other people, like the lot that we have on Beaver Dam Road, for an example, where it's a flat lot, shouldn't have to come up and pay $25,000 or $30,000 to take care of an event, a event that's probably not gonna happen. So I'm in favor of, again, better than 95% of what we've done, I don't have a problem with it. I think most developers or builders wouldn't have a problem complying with that. It's the amount of studies that we have to go through to prove that. So if we can take care of that, the regulations will-
Yeah, it seems to me that's a fine line, because as you suggest, a homeowner has legal remedies, but we really don't want to set up a situation where the only remedy a homeowner has is to have to take somebody to court. We want to have a set of requirements that hopefully everybody lives by that takes care of 95% of it, right? I mean, we don't-
So the basins we moved here until eight years ago.
Right.
I mean, that's the issue. If somebody floods you out, you've got a right to go after them. They can't flood you out.
But just so I clarify, what I think I'm hearing is we're all saying the same thing in the sense of like what Samantha said, what John said. What you're saying is if we didn't change the threshold that's currently in place right now, but all the other regulations, all the other changes to the bylaw happen, that would be okay? Am I hearing that?
What I'm saying is that the 15, whether it's 15,000, 18,000, or 20,000, that's not the big issue, right? Or zero. I mean, the issue is, you want to bring everybody in front of you for something, okay? Anyone that puts a shovel in the ground should have to come in and deal with the stormwater, okay? It's the thresholds of how you deal with the engineering of it. And what I'm saying is, if all you gotta do is put infiltrators in to infiltrate, like Samantha's looking for, for her particular interest is get as much water as you can into the ground, okay? Well, put the water in the ground. Put infiltrators in. That's to accomplish what she's looking for. It's not gonna matter whether somebody's cutting trees down on the lot or not cutting them down on the lot. It matters of what you do with the water once the water's on the lot, okay? And again, this gentleman over here, whether it's 15 or 20,000 square feet, it's not gonna make a difference. The difference is what happens with the water. It's not how big the area is, it's what happens with the water. So again, the reason I went to the 20,000 was to get some people away from that burden of spending the 15 to $30,000 just because it was 1,000 square feet here or 1,000 square feet there. That shouldn't be what the trigger is to make this thing work. And I think, that was the best thing, I think it came out of Water Resource, actually, was this default, right? What do you do if you're below that threshold? And it was a great idea, and simple infiltrators is the answer. We're in Norwell. We're building over there. We don't meet the 40,000 square feet, and we put the infiltrators in anyways, because it's the right thing to do, and it's relatively inexpensive, and we don't have to do a study to do it. We just go and put them in. It takes a couple of hours to put them in. It's not a big deal. But if you want me to spend $15,000 to figure out exactly how to put one in the ground, that's crazy.
Okay.
Briefly, I just want to, three numbers. The lot next to me is worth a minimum of $400,000, probably. $15,000 over the scope of that $400,000 is nothing to the amount of money, tens of thousands that I'm gonna have to spend in remediation, or the course that you're recommending, which is legal. And again, my message is, don't push that down to me. I want the board to help me, and not necessarily me. This isn't about me. This is about all these other folks out here that probably like me, that are really, really strung up by these builders that don't want to play by the rules, okay? Thank you very much.
Samantha.
So, yeah, I think you should lower the threshold if Javier feels that way. I mean, why wouldn't you want to then have more people come through? And then you can change the way the regulation deals with them. But I think you might want to consider lowering the threshold. And the stormwater's a cumulative problem. You, yeah, you've got most of your town built out, and this bylaw actually does try to get at redevelopment through, if you have 25% more increase in pervious coverage on your lot, you have to go, that's also a trigger. So we're not getting away from it, although we were trying to be reasonable about, you know?
In a residential district, if you have houses, it's very rare that you can have more than 25% impervious area. So my example, I have three of others on my property, all three have put water on me.
So lower it.
Sure. But lowering it isn't gonna solve my problem, right? All of the people that are there now put water on my property. There's pipes coming over onto the property. They pump it right onto it.
You don't want to be exacerbated.
Okay, that's okay, all right? I mean, I'm a developer, okay? But it's okay that they put their water onto my property, because now I have to deal with it. Or I could file suit against them to get rid of them, okay? So it's not just the developer against, I mean, I'm not here just for developers. I'm here for the people that have lots.
This obviously will apply to anybody who falls into this criteria.
Try to not make the problem more exacerbated, but be reasonable at the same time.
And again-
What do you think about, while we're talking about this issue, what do you think about this notion of having an administrative process for, up to a certain point, and then a-
There's an administrative process already in there, okay? It's the thresholds that kick in and the requirements for that. So again, Samantha, I'll go to zero square feet, okay? Zero square feet. But I'll tell you what. Let's use 20,000 or less that kicks in infiltrators or not, okay? So if you're 20,000 square feet, in our regulations, let's say if you're less than 20,000 square feet, you put infiltrators in above the groundwater. Done, okay? You got your zero, okay? We got your infiltrators. You got your default. And I got my 20,000 square feet. Everybody's happy, okay? There's the solution. So if we put that in, I'll agree, let's go to zero. Oh, it doesn't work? What's wrong? That's not it?
If you've got a new paved driveway going uphill-
No, I did, I agreed in, and I'll tell you why later. I'll tell you why later.
Under the rules and regulations, if written now, it costs me money.
No. I'll explain why later. No, I didn't.
You're saying later?
No, no.
Okay.
We can do it one problem at a time. The triggers are what you're discussing in the bylaw. The regulations, we could talk about how much money is gonna be spent on engineering and why, and what the reasons are for what those could be. And I'm sure we'll be back at it.
Yeah, so I'd recommend, until we know what those are, don't change the threshold, don't lower the threshold until we know what that is. Because all of a sudden, if the regulations become so onerous like they are right now, if you're over the threshold, I would never support lowering that at all until we know what the regulation says.
But right now, there's a proposal to increase it. So what you're saying is if we struck that, at least for the time being, and didn't change the threshold right now, that would be at least acceptable to start? Am I hearing that?
I still think you can end up going with the 18, and if the regulation's gonna take care of it anyways. Because you can make the regulations stricter if you want.
I'm thinking maybe the language about the infiltrators should go in the regulations, just require everyone to do it.
Agreed.
And then, you know, maybe there's some kind of a break on the other engineering costs, but I want to leave that to the consulting engineers to give some input on.
I see that it's almost nine o'clock, so do we have any other comments at this point? Or maybe we can leave it, actually, to the board at this point?
So you're gonna continue to add that-
We need to kind of-
What's that?
You're gonna continue the hearing and add that language in?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, because I'm supposed to get this to Tricia as soon as possible. So are we all okay leaving this at 15, or do we want to make it 18 for the trigger? What do you want?
I think I would support leaving it at 15 myself. You know, it's, that's where it is now. I don't know if we need to change that until we get maybe deeper into what we're talking about here. And it sounds like some of the other changes we're talking about are actually gonna provide some real teeth to sort of enforcement of what we have.
Are you gonna put the default in? Like, everybody has to be required to put in infiltrators?
I think you needed a vote.
That may be, that may be what we need, but I don't know that as a gut feel, right?
It's probably not in this piece that we're actually, actually looking at right now.
Maybe we can put something in there that if the whole lot is gonna be pervious after the redevelopment or whatever, like the gravel driveway, that maybe it could be exempt. be exempt? I, I don't know, you know, but, um, I think we can do some more with the regulations.
It'd be good to have some sort of, um, of engineering input to that, that matrix or whatever we're talking about, about what, what gets exempt for whatever reason, what gets defaults for whatever reason. I mean, I, I hear what you're saying, Steve, about infiltrators, but, um, you know, that's not my specialty. And I would just like to know, you know, in ninety-five, in a hundred percent of the cases, at, at a certain size, does that work? Or is it only in eighty percent of the cases? And do we need to worry about it?
So every site specific, all the way across, that's why I say you still have to do some testing. As a builder, we've got to go out and dig the holes, see whether we have gravel, we have...
So this sounds like a level of detail that maybe is sort of at the regulation.
That's why I say it's got to be in the regulations.
Similar to what you do for subject systems.
I'm sorry?
Got to know what the perk rate is.
So I could leave the concept of administrative review and put that in the regulations as proposed by law?
So, I think that's where the threat, it's just the threshold is all you're looking for, the threshold's all this.
We put that, I believe we put that in the bylaw.
Put what in the bylaw?
Administrative review?
Because I think you said default, and then you come back and use that as the hurdle. When you look at the individual lot, if that's inadequate, then you come back up and then you do more of an engineering...
I guess what I'm hearing, though, is that there's a certain amount of engineering that has to go on to put any infiltrator in, right? So, so it's degrees is what we're talking about, and maybe, maybe our engineer over here can educate us a little.
You got to do a little bit of onsite testing, determine your soil type and your groundwater, too.
Yeah.
I'm not anyway, I believe.
Okay. So we'll still explore the default, but we'll do that in the regulations. If we can find some way that if people, you know, under certain circumstances, people can be required to do some standard things to deal with, you know, stormwater on their property, um, and not have to go through this process. But, you know, I think there's still going to be some engineering involved, some soil testing, looking at the grades.
And then not changing the trigger, correct?
Not changing the trigger.
Okay.
Oh, and what's the, I'm sorry, the deadline for all the language has to be by what time?
I think basically...
This is it, right?
For the town meeting.
So we ought to make a decision on what we can support right now.
Yeah.
And I guess I would say, what's the, what's the board's pleasure on this one?
But also be in my, be mindful that this is not the last change we can and probably will make to this part of the bylaws.
Well, it's going to be a lot more awkward after this.
Well, you're already going to...
Because this is what's going to go off to the warrant.
But you're alr, no, no, I don't mean this time around, I mean a year from now, for example.
A year from now?
You know, when we put the regulations in force, we may find there's pieces of this that need tweaking in order to back match to the regulations.
Sure.
In fact, I think that's probably pretty likely.
But I think it's also important, at town meeting, the average person, I don't think is really going to understand all this. It's hard for us, I think, as non-engineers. So to have like Samantha say, well, I'm speaking against this, you know, if I was at town meeting and she stood up and said, oh, I don't, I don't support this, you know, that, that'd be like, oh, I don't want to vote for this. So I want to make sure that we're all in agreement...
So influential.
Well, you know, my point, my, my point is, I want us all to be on the same page as, as much as possible, to be as supportive...
We need support.
Exactly. Because if, at town meeting, if we stand up and we say, the planning board has this new bylaw, and North-South Watershed Association backs it, and the, the builders back it, and you, conservation backs it, people are going to go, okay, great, we're going to vote for it. Uh, that's all I'm saying, is I think we just need to be united in what we're doing, that's all.
Okay, so are we united in what we're doing?
On its own, it depends what we're doing.
So we're, we're keeping, or we're keeping the trigger...
I think, I think what we said was, the changes that we proposed here are changes we're willing to go forward with, with the exception of changing the trigger from, from fifteen to eighteen thousand, so leave it at fifteen.
We'll leave it at fifteen.
Is that...
That's fine.
That's what I'm hearing.
I'm going to agree with that.
Okay. So do we need to...
Do we need to vote?
We need to...
Yeah.
Do we need to close the hearing first?
Yeah.
So, I need a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing for stormwater bylaw.
Second. Well, is it fair?
Aye.
Okay.
Move to...
Accept the general language, with the exception of making the criteria fifteen thousand rather, retaining the criteria fifteen thousand.
Under the applicability section, right?
Yep.
Correct.
Does that, does that apply in more than one construction engineer?
Uh, I think it also is found in number three.
In number three, right? Yeah. So we're changing that throughout the document then, right?
Yeah, let's keep four A, one, and where else?
Now, we also have fifteen percent slope rather than twenty-five percent in number two. So, do we want to go back to fifteen percent or...
No, I think we should keep it at twenty-five, people want it at twenty-five.
Really?
The only change, or the thing that we should retain is the square foot trigger.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm good with that.
Can I go on record saying I conceded to that?
No, wait, our record actually says that we set a much higher trigger than you wanted.
Okay, I, I recommended zero.
And lower it. And not as nice.
I recommended zero, okay? I heard that.
Can I ask you a question about the slope? Does that change as well?
Yeah.
From fifteen to twenty-five.
Fifteen is steep, twenty-five is safer.
True.
And that's really what you want.
What's with the water resource protection district? So we just match that, right?
Right.
I can't put one less.
Do you want a motion to approve?
Yes, I do.
Move that we approve the changes that are documented, stormwater bylaw, dated two, we'll call it eleven, sixteen.
Two-two sixteen.
Two-two sixteen.
Two-two sixteen, with the following changes, yes?
Yeah, except for the eighteen.
Oh, this one's dated two-two, yeah.
I second.
Any discussion? All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you all for coming. Appreciate all of you.
Yeah, appreciate you much.
And let me say thanks to those who participated in the working group.
Yeah, absolutely.
We appreciate your efforts. Thank you very much. Yep. And thank you for running the whole thing, Laura.
You don't want to share, I'm sure.
I've got...
Anything for the class.
Anything?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, it's a little after nine o'clock, we're at one-oh-five Hathley Road.
Yeah, that's, um, see...
Form A? Is that you, Steve?
Yeah, it's actually, the form A is on the second I think.
Yeah, the form A is...
What's first?
Informal discussion.
Oh, informal discussion, got it. All right.
Assuming this is the best spot for me to put this on.
Formal discussion. What?
Let me, we can just kind of kick back and...
Yeah.
Really should.
Five, Hathley, residential compound. Oh, yeah, sorry, we don't have many of these in town.
I remember right.
Here's Sullivan, too.
Yeah. I don't know.
You're awesome, you know that? I'm nothing, you're awesome.
They're the one, they're from Wapatack.
Oh, that's what I was going to ask you.
The kids do, um, and, um...
Fifth grade.
This is like the first year that you guys are, they actually did good to the board members.
Oh, great.
Very, very nice.
That's great. Thank you, Wapatack School.
I can't even...
We'll let you kick off the informal discussion.
Just for the record, Steve B. Oakland, um, and I have a partner in Diamond Development, and we have a piece of property under agreement out at one-oh-five Hathley Road, which is just north of the lights at Turner Road.
Yeah.
Um, property is a little bit over three acres of land. And what we're trying to do is develop a, what they call six-ten-two-D, which is a residential compound development, or otherwise known as a shared frontage development, which allows up to five homes, um, as long as you've got four times the square footage for a lot required. This is a ten thousand square foot zone, so we have forty thousand square feet for each lot in the residential compound. And what we're doing, if you look at the plan, is it's, it's a little bit unusual because we have, on the north side of the property, there's a fifty-foot lot in here, fifty feet of frontage on Hathley Road, which is required to have twenty thousand square feet of upland. And that's actually the subject of my Form A, which will be on after the informal discussion, to create that lot. And we have three additional lots in here, one of them which has an existing home on it. I'm not sure if your plan shows the existing home or not, it's got on that, okay? And that home is, is, is going to be raised, and there'll be a new, new house going in. Um, I don't know how well you can see this plan here, I didn't color it up, but just because it was informal. But what we're looking to do is to come in across the frontage of the fifty-foot lot and create a private access drive that comes in and serves one, two, three, four homes. So it'll be three additional homes, other than what's there right now. Uh, the site presently has an eight-inch sewer line, a sewer main that comes into the property, and that sewer main serves, I think it's one-oh-nine and one-oh-five, both of those homes are tied in. And we're probably going to be in front of the Board of Selectmen to see if we can continue the eight-inch line up the, the private access drive and serve the three new homes that will go in there as well. Everybody around us is pretty much on a ten thousand square foot lot, so we think that this is a very minor use of a piece of property that could probably have a lot more lots on it if we went through the subdivision process. But we are not looking at constructing a subdivision road in here, so we're trying to come under the zoning bylaw instead.
So is this essentially a common driveway?
It's, yeah, it's, well, under six-ten-two-D, um, excuse me, under the common driveway bylaw, you can serve up to three homes on a common driveway.
Right.
If it's involved in a six-ten-two-D, you can serve up to five homes on the common driveway, because you're using a lot more land area for that. You're not required to have open space in the development, but you are required to have at least twenty thousand square feet of area around the house. And then if you wanted to leave an open space portion, you have to have an additional twenty thousand square feet per lot somewhere else within the tract of land. And each of the homes in here, um, they share the frontage that we'll have out here, which we have to have a minimum of a hundred feet of tract frontage on Hathley Road. The only lot that has to have that frontage would be the front lot. The additional lots that were created in the back don't have to have any frontage. So originally, I drew a plan that didn't have the ten-foot strips of land on them, which are these strips in here. And in talking to DPW in regards to our sewer and what we have to do to try to get sewer in here, uh, each lot has, they require that each lot should have to have frontage on Hathley Road with a sewer line. Where, when we go to the Board of Selectmen, I'm going to ask if the Board of Selectmen will waive that requirement, because this is the only shared frontage development, other than the Arrowood Project out in the West End that's been proposed in town. And technically, these lots, while they might not front on Hathley Road, they share the frontage of the front lot on Hathley. So it's a little bit unusual, the way it interplays between the sewer, sewer requirements and zoning requirements. So the lots have technical frontage, even though they don't front on Hathley Road. So for the purposes of the informal discussion, we just drew the ten-foot strips out there so they all have frontage. I'm hoping that with some support, we can get DPW and the Selectmen to change the way they're thinking, because to me, it, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have the strips go out there, it doesn't do anything.
So does that mean that the road will go across three or four people's property there, then?
What, what happens is, there's an easement for the driveway itself, which shows on this plan here. So that the, we've got some wetlands in the front here, so the driveway's coming in where the existing driveway is now that goes into the house, but it'll be upgraded to at least an eighteen-foot wide driveway. We're required to go twenty feet unless with the approval of the fire chief, if you ask for it, he can reduce it to eighteen feet. And I can tell you that he has said, if you ask him to have it reduced, that if we add a fire hydrant out there for them, that they would be glad to allow you to reduce it to eighteen feet. So we're hoping that we'll come in and ask for that to be reduced to eighteen, just there's, there's less pavement out there, there's less runoff, the detention basin ends up smaller, all the things we just talked about are, are better if we go to the eighteen-foot road out here. And in the area where the existing home is, that's the area we have proposed to take the home down and build a detention basin in that area. This particular plan has a dotted line going across it, because we were going to put that in an easement on Lot Four. And after chatting with Laura, um, I think we decided that we were going to put the basin on its own lot, rather than have it on that one lot. We're not sure exactly how large the basin is. If it's over twenty-five hundred square feet, it's got to be on its own lot, under the zoning bylaw. If it's less than twenty-five hundred, it could actually be on that lot, but it doesn't hurt us to put it on its own lot anyways. So we'll probably put that on a lot. There will be a homeowners association with this for the maintenance of the drainage system, as well as the driveway itself. And the driveway has to have a fire truck turnaround and all that, that is required in the common driveway bylaw as well.
Is the wetland delineation there, is that the buffer zone, or is that the actual edge of the...
No, that's the actual wetland itself, and that was delineated by Brad Holmes, and it was approved by conservation, um, under an Anrad plan. And I think it was last week that we went in, and they did confirm the line, I think there's twenty-three flags out there. And it's, it's pretty evident exactly where it is, it's the edge of a swamp. There's actually a drop-off to the swamp. So the detention basin, part of the house right now is located in the fifty-foot buffer strip, which everybody refers to as a no-build zone, but if you read the conservation regulations, it's not a no-build zone, it's just a buffer strip. Sometimes they can go more, sometimes they can go less than fifty feet, it's site-specific, but it doesn't say that you can't build in it. We just have to provide mitigation if we're going to do something like that. So we, we may have a portion of the basin in that area, because it's going to be disturbed already. And there is some yard area around that, which will incorporate into the stormwater system for the, the homes, as well as the common driveway itself.
So the basin's going where the house was?
Yeah, pretty much where the house is, and it'll, it'll come all the way up towards the property line here, so it'll be a, more of a hot dog-shaped thing. I hate to do them just round basins, so if we can put a shape to it, it'll be a lot nicer out there. Uh, so we just think it's a, it's a great use for this particular piece of property, and wanted to come in and show you what we were looking at, and see if you see any glaring errors, or...
I have a question.
Sure.
Um, is there, Kenneth Road is here, and Kenneth Road is there. Is there a paper street through here?
There used to be a paper street before they changed the land court plans and it's extinguished it.
It's off.
Yeah, it's off, and Kenneth Road up at the, at this end, right here, which I'll refer to as the west end of the property, the ocean is on, on this side of, of Hathley. Kenneth Road in this area, it ties back into Turner Road, and it's actually not constructed. So it, this portion of it is a paper street, but there is, I think, two homes on there, and it's built more like a driveway. If you drove by, you would never be able to tell that the road was there, it just looks like a private driveway. So, and we have no intent to go in and upgrade that. And again, I'm trying to get away from doing a subdivision and going through the whole, the whole cost of building a subdivision road in there. And, and the trade-off for that is exactly what the requirements are for the six-ten-two-D. Use, use bigger lots, have less development, fewer houses, and reduce the costs of infrastructure. And this will reduce any potential burden on the town, because it will be a private drive going in there, and that's in perpetuity, and you have to have that as a restriction as part of the bylaw itself.
You brought the sewer stub right onto the property?
Actually, in nineteen seventy-eight, Marion Road Extension, and what they referred to as Kenneth Road, which actually didn't put it here, Kenneth Road is directly across, like Janet said, the, the sewer lines, instead of going down Hathley Road from the lights until a little bit further up, actually comes up each of the streets. Wapatack, it comes up to Hathley, so there's like three or four streets where it, it just comes up in. When they did Marion Road, and they did this one here, they put a manhole in, in the middle of Hathley Road, and then they actually extended an eight-inch sewer line into this property. And then off the eight-inch sewer main, they tied the two houses in. They did the same thing on, on Marion Road Extension, and then a number of years ago, I think sometime in the eighties, if I'm correct, Marion Road Extension, they actually built the houses in there. And they were allowed to extend the sewer main, because it was all done and prepared for back in nineteen seventy, seventy-eight. So we're hoping that the, again, we're hoping the Board of Selectmen will allow us to tie the three houses, new three houses in. If not, there are some perk tests done out there, but there is high groundwater out there, and like the last gentleman had said, if we don't have to build it way up out of the ground, we're going to try not to build it up out of the ground. Groundwater here has an average of two feet deep. So it's typical situation.
That's why there's a swamp over there.
Two feet. So, obviously, getting the sewer would be important, I think it will make it a much nicer development if we can get the sewer in there. So that's what we're going to hope for.
Do you have to go before zone for this?
Uh, I have to go, well, not for, not for the six-ten-two-D. I have to go, well, not for, not for the 610-2D. What I have to go for the zoning board of appeals for is to get the right to construct a single-family dwelling on the 50-foot lot, which if, there's no questions about this, the Form A is the next thing that's on, which is we're trying to create. And I'll still answer questions if you have an answer about the 610-2D. The Form A is pretty straightforward. It's just a 50-foot lot with twice the area. And then we've got the notes on it that the house is going to be removed from the existing because obviously the property line goes through the existing house. The existing house is in very poor shape, so it's got to come down.
What's on most of the property now? Is it woods?
Yeah.
And the proposed Toll Brothers, is that to the north quite a bit?
Yes. Yeah, you have the houses on Marion Road Extension, so you can see these on this plan here.
Yep.
You see Marion Road Extension here. So those lots are probably about 100 feet deep, and then Toll Brothers starts from there and goes north.
Okay.
It's a bigger piece of land than I thought was in there.
Yeah, this is, I mean, it's a really, it's a good-sized piece of property. And the other thing that we've done is, there's basically an owner unknown piece of property down here that's a non-taxable piece that's been that way since 1925. And I've actually found the owner of the property.
Is that the one that says Catherine Burns?
Yeah, she owned it in 1925.
The purpose for the little sliver north of Lot 1?
We put that in there because the home on the 50-foot special permit lot, when we get that put in, this actually restricts that by putting a little bit bigger buffer on that lot because now there's more of a buffer between this lot right here, okay, and where they could build a house. So we added an extra, I think it's 10 feet wide. So we added that just to restrict that, and it basically becomes nobody on land. So it's got to, it just has to remain the way it is. So I thought it was better because even though we've got two separate projects going on here, because it's the 50 footer and the 610-2D, I want to make it all look like it's one project because it's going to be basically served on that drive. So it made sense to put that in there.
So what you said there, Lot 1 would be served off the drive?
Yep.
Okay.
Is the driveway going to have to go over the sewer?
Yeah, I mean, the sewer will go right down the driveway, and that's where you want to put it anyways. I mean, if there's got to be a manhole or something in there, it's nice to have it in the pavement rather than off the edge of the roadway. So we would design it that way provided the Selectmen will allow us to tie the sewer in. And on the 610-2D, the requirement for the driveway, all it says is we have to have the driveway, it has to have rights to access a public way. So it'll access the public way on the easement that's shown on that plan, which will be across the 50-foot lot.
And as far as you know now, the fire department's okay with the width or a width that might be less than the 20 feet? And also with the hammerhead as opposed to a turnaround at the end?
Yeah. The requirements on the common driveway itself, and most common driveways that you get in town, won't have a cul-de-sac at the end of it.
Right, but you'd only be serving three homes on a common driveway, and you're serving more than that here.
Right, but the requirement in the common driveway bylaw is to provide a hammerhead 20 feet by 30 feet.
Right.
But the chief has already looked at the plans informally.
Yep.
And the only way that he can provide a letter for you guys saying that 18 feet is okay is if you guys look at the plan and say, we'd like the chief to allow you to go down to 18 feet. So I can't technically go to him first and say, you want me to have 18 feet?
Right, I understand, but the concept is there.
Yes. He's reviewed the plans informally, and his only comment was where he wanted two fire hydrants. He does not want one at the end of the drive where the turnaround is. He wants one about halfway down the driveway because he wants the trucks to pass it first, and then, and they drop their lines after they pass it. So, but he'll get the hydrants wherever he wants them.
Sure.
How far is it from Hathley to the last house?
Less than 500 feet. So technically, we don't even have to have a hydrant in there, but we never fight against fire protection. It's whatever he wants, he gets.
You can't have too many hydrants.
No.
Can you quickly go over again the area requirements for the 610-2D?
You have to have four times the area for the district that you're in. So this is a 10,000-square-foot zone, so each of those lots has to have 40,000 square feet within the tract, okay? So anywhere within the tract, there has to be 40,000 square feet, three times. So we need 120,000-square-foot tract of land, okay? And we've got 120,089 square feet.
Okay.
Designed that way purposely. It will also be, if we can, we'll be potentially adding that sliver in as well. While we don't plan to build on that sliver of land, if I can buy it for the right price, which I think I can, it'll probably be added to the project.
So I guess my next question is, with 40,000 square feet per house dwelling unit, would you consider having setbacks that would apply to R1 zoning?
Well, what happens in here is, in the 610-2D requirement in the bylaw, is that we have to have a 30-foot zone if you can't put houses around the entire tract.
Okay.
So, and we've got that on this plan here. That's why, when, I don't know who made the comment about the strip that I've got in the back here, but now you can see it puts it more in line with the setbacks that are required here.
Okay.
So even though this isn't held to the same standard.
Yep.
Based on my design, I'm making it hold a little bit more to those standards.
Okay.
So it's just, it was the right thing to do.
So that sort of takes care of that initial situation. What happens when I want to put up a garage or a shed or, you know, does, does that also prohibit any development in that area ongoingly?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the required setback for the tract, and it's all subject to the special permit.
For everything from, from the beginning of the world, as they say, until whenever?
Yeah. And as you can see, what we've got designed, I mean, we basically put a block on there of what we think the house is, you know, going to look like. Can they move them around a little bit? They could rotate this house a little bit if they want to. It's got to be within the setback lines that we show on the plan.
Okay.
And there, those are rather large blocks that we have on there. I think those are 90 by 30 feet, if I remember correctly. So obviously, when we go for house construction, you know, the garage isn't going to be 30 feet deep. The garage might be 24 feet deep, so you'll see jogs that will fit in that area. But when we design the drainage system for this, I always put in a larger house than I think someone's going to do so that I know our drainage system is going to be bigger than what we would need so that there won't be a problem with any neighbors getting flooded because the calculations didn't come in right. And we did the same thing on Tilden Estates. They had about a 50% fudge factor there, which is why the basin is so big. But I'd rather, I'd rather over-design it than under-design it.
Again, this may be early to talk about this kind of thing, but if this whole tract is wooded, is that setback line a no-disturb zone or simply a no-build zone?
No-build zone.
Just, just going back to this, four times the size for each lot, so shouldn't you be at 200,000?
No, because we have three lots in the 610-2D, okay? So that's 120,000 square feet.
And one lot in the porch.
And I have a 50-foot special permit lot which requires 20,000 square feet.
Oh, I thought you said you were doing five houses.
Well, it is.
Four houses total. There's one house out there now. So it's three additional homes. But three of the homes are in the 610-2D. The other one, which is the Form A, is the 50-foot lot.
So if three homes could actually just, could just be a regular common driveway then?
If what?
So the three homes could actually just be a regular common driveway, right? Doesn't have to be this other residential compound thing, right?
No, the residential compound is, allows the lots. Common driveway, it's the standard of how you build the common driveway. If you serve more than three lots, it's referred to as a private access drive constructed under the requirements of a common driveway. So it becomes a little bit wider, and, but it's built to the same standard as a common driveway. It's just a different terminology when you read, and I suggest everybody reads Section 610-2D because we will be coming in with it. It's only, it's a couple pages.
So this fourth house does not apply to this at all?
The only reason that it shows on this plan is because in my overall development, I just wanted to show we're kind of creating a four-lot division on the drive, but three of them are the 610-2D.
So I think what Steve's trying to ask is, and I was trying to figure this out too, is there any advantage, and I'm just asking this to understand it, to having what you, like Lot 1, but have a driveway go out directly to Hathley, and then the three other lots have the common driveway?
See, that...
I'm not, I'm just asking.
No, we could do that, but that's what doesn't make sense.
Okay.
And actually, I thought, that was the first thing I talked to Laura about when we came in. It just doesn't make sense to have two driveways side by side.
Okay.
And there's nothing that I can read that says we can't do it the way that we're doing it. It just says that the, we have to provide access to a public way on an easement for the three that are in the 610-2D, and that's fine.
I think there's a lot of advantages in terms of density of development. The common driveway solution might allow you either less setbacks, you wouldn't have that 30-foot buffer zone requirement, right?
He can't do the common driveway because he doesn't have enough...
It doesn't have the frontage, or, except for the wetland area.
Well, even with the wetland area, I don't think he has the frontage.
Well, the common driveway doesn't provide any frontage at all. You can't take frontage off the common driveway, okay?
Right, right.
So the frontage is just Hathley Road.
Okay.
Okay? I mean, I could go in there without the residential compound, and I could get three lots, if I wanted to get three lots.
Right.
I don't, I'm going for four lots. We're actually, and this plan doesn't really show it too well, but we're actually purchasing two 5,000-square-foot lots. One that shows because it's unregistered, the rest of it's registered, it's always a problem.
Yeah, it's on, yeah, it's 101 and 103.
Yes.
I'm in favor of this. I think this is a good, good use of the land.
Yeah, it should be a good project.
You know, amply buffers the neighborhood from, from the new development, which is always a concern.
Yep.
Yeah.
You could do the three 50-foot frontage lots in there, but I think the problem would be that you have to do two driveways.
Yeah, if you get the fourth one. So I'm trying to do it on one driveway.
Right, and that's really what I was trying to ask, to really understand how this came about, right? And that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, a lot of thought.
So for the, for the fourth house.
Yep.
You're connecting it to this common driveway.
Yep.
But you need, do you need some kind of variance to do that?
Nope.
You can have up to five in the bylaw.
But no, this lot doesn't wrap into this particular division.
But all it says for the 610-2D is I have to provide access to the public way.
No, I get that. You see, you're saying three houses, access to the public way, fine. That's what I'm saying, is the fourth house.
It's just going to...
It's going to tie into a private...
It's going to have a driveway. The fourth house will have a driveway, okay? We're going to allow the construction of that driveway to continue through and access the other three homes. And that's the nexus for this whole thing.
Okay, so I don't...
So the other three homes don't, aren't going to have any rights to the driveway?
They will.
They will, but...
They'll have an easement over the driveway. I have to provide easements over that driveway for them.
Okay.
Anybody can have easements, you know, wherever they want to, as long as they're meeting the frontage and the lot size and everything else.
They had something kind of like this years ago, and I think maybe Bill might have been around then, off of Mordecai Lincoln Road.
Yes.
It was the Andersons had a big chunk of property out there, and I think they actually developed five, five house lots, and they actually designed two common driveways to go in because at the time, there was no 610-2D. And instead of building the two common driveways that were approved, it was actually constructed with one common driveway, and it's been that way for, I want to say, close to 20 years, almost 20 years. They just didn't bother to build a second driveway. And they transferred house after house, and nobody's ever picked up on the fact that the second driveway doesn't exist. But you know what? It was a great use of the property, and if you go out there, you never know the difference. This one, I think we're a step above because I think we meet the regulation. So it's a little twist to it, but...
Yeah, we're in a similar situation.
Yeah.
Andersons got six houses left there.
No, I think five.
Five.
Five, yeah.
Okay.
So that's it. So I'm going to, I'll basically be off, going to the Board of Selectmen to try and find out about whether I can tie into town sewer. Once I know the answer to that, I'm going to know how to grade the site off, and then I'll do a full filing if no one's got any other questions, but it's, this is, it's an ideal situation for the 610-2D. I think the neighbors will be pretty happy too because it is a really low use of the property.
So the homeowners association will include this property as well?
Yep.
Obviously has to.
Yep. I want to make it look like it's one project, even though it's just a 50-foot...
Well, it's going to have to legally, in that, in that sense, act as one project as well.
You're going to plan your time to talk about this.
Oh, yeah.
Sure, okay.
Definitely.
You've basically come to the conclusion that this approach with four houses is more economical than a subdivision and 10,000-square-foot lots and 12 houses or whatever you can do in there?
I just really don't want to spend the time to do a subdivision, and I think it's just a great use for this particular piece of property. And, you know, again, I think, I don't think the neighbors can, you know, really be upset about the fact that there's going to be three new houses back there, plus take down the one that's there. It just, to me, it's a really good use of the property and good project.
Better spacious, I think.
Okay. So at this point, we don't need to do anything?
No, we just want to move right onto the Form A.
Laura wants to go home.
No, no.
Someday.
I don't want to go home. Here's 24/7.
Okay.
Any questions about the Form A? What's going on?
I'm missing a motion.
No, we just need a motion. It's this one.
No, no, I know, I'm just, I'm asking.
Yeah.
Okay.
I move to endorse as approved under the subdivision control law not required, a plan of land in the town of Situate, Massachusetts, 105 Hathley Road, prepared by Ross Engineering Company Incorporated for Diamond Development Realty Trust dated 1/14/2016. As the division of the tract of land shown is not a subdivision because every lot shown on the plan has frontage of at least the distance presently required by the Situate zoning bylaw on the public way of Hathley Road when the 50-foot frontage special permit from the ZBA is approved and recorded. The plan shall be held in escrow by the town planner until proof of recording of the ZBA special permit is furnished.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Who is it?
Do we need to do a motion on Wood Island?
Yeah.
Oh, that, because they rescinded...
They rescind, yeah, they withdrawn, right?
Or not rescinded.
They approved their request.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I move to accept the applicant's request to withdraw without prejudice the Form A plan showing a division of parcel 4-1-11, 24 Wood Island Road, prepared by Morse Engineering Company Incorporated for the Wood Island Realty Trust, James I. and Linda S. Tribble, TRS dated January 26, 2016. This action is taken in accordance with the attached letter from Walter B. Sullivan dated February 10, 2016.
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
White Ash Farm. Surety. Lot release and surety reduction.
So we had Pat Brennan look at the...
Give this away.
At the list of work that was remaining to be done and, and what other surety was kept for. And we got down to keeping a balance of 8,605, which is the maintenance guarantee for, let's see here. Let's see. That's the maintenance guarantee. So the amount that's going to be refunded is 75,108.38. And there are also two lot releases that they're requesting. They typically could have gotten the lot releases when they put up the surety in the first place, but they didn't do that. They just got the lot, Doug just got the lot released for the back lot. So there's really, you know, no problem with any of this.
So all the subdivision work is pretty much done? It is done, all there is is the maintenance.
No, there's two minor things.
Down with the ASB plans and some of the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, there's two, there's just two minor things.
That's covered under this 8,000? That's covered under this 8,000?
It's covered under the...
Okay. Sounds good.
Thank you. I move to accept Morse Engineering Company Incorporated's request on behalf of Douglas E. Sheeran to release lots number one and lot number two of the White Ash Farm definitive flexible open space plan, approved by the board on May 14, 2014, from the covenant recorded on November 3, 2014, in the Plymouth County Registry of Deeds in Book 44908, Page 102, and to reduce the cash surety being held by the town to secure the performance of the remaining work to $8,605. This represents the 10% maintenance guarantee, which the subdivision regulations require to be held for 18 months after the completion of a subdivision, and items retaining to be complete, $6,443.85 rounded up, plus $2,160. Amory Engineers has verified that the as-built substantially complies with the design, and the work is nearly complete. The recorded lot releases shall be provided to the town planner prior to the application for a building permit on lots number one and lot number two.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Great. Okay, we've got some licenses that you guys have to sign.
Okay.
Just sign down there.
Do we have any accounting?
Oh, signatures, oh, right here?
Yeah. Those lines at the bottom.
Those lines, okay.
Those lines at the bottom.
You want to do some account?
Yeah, and...
We'll sign ritual.
Okay.
Here, we'll read.
So I move that we approve, let's see, $100 for toner for the print copier, as well as $249.24 for legal ads in the Situate Mariner pertaining to Countryway Multi-Use Trail and Blanchard Farm, the accessory dwelling special permit. And then also, wow. Is this right? Oh, this is the surety, I'm sorry. 75,207.90 for the reduction of the surety for White Ash Farm, and which 8,605 will remain in the account. And then also, an expenditure for $200 for services associated with the labor associated with attending the meeting for the applicant on December 21, 2015. Oh, I'm sorry, this is to the Horsley-Witten Group. And, that's it.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
It's a big bill, 75,000.
Okay. We have minutes?
Yeah, and I was gone, so I'm not going to be able to, I don't think I should be able to.
These are the ones that were sent out?
Yes.
No changes?
No changes.
Move to approve the minutes of January 28, 2016?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Was it just one set?
One set.
Okay.
Recurrence, she's fast with the numbers.
Okay.
Very fast.
Liaison reports, anybody?
EDC?
Yeah, what's going on with the signage?
This stuff going on with signage, we've come up with the possibility of 16 locations for signs, monument signs, some directional signs, working on a number of different things. We're going to have, before the next meeting, some of us are going to take a walk through North Situate, starting at about 5:00, to take a look at what's going on, what recommendations Ted Bogets could possibly make. Also, to discuss the fact that Green Bush is probably, unless we get sewer in North Situate, which may or may not happen anytime soon, Green Bush is the next one that's going to be in the line of fire as a lot.
What does that mean?
Okay, in terms of development, sorry.
It's the focus of development.
It's focus. The Anderson properties, and do you know all know where the Anderson property is? It's where Fitz Mill.
Yeah.
Do you know where Fitz Mill is?
Yeah.
All that property is under agreement as we speak. Then there is just discussion with the MBTA lot and what's going to happen there. It is my understanding from discussion last night that Sosha Auto Parts is for sale.
True.
So, you know, that this, and then there are massinations from Town Hall in terms of the golf course and what may or may not take place with all of that.
Also, the medical building is for sale, too, right there on the, even though that's zoned residential, but...
But it's also, as Laura pointed out last night, in the A-zone, so it is a very difficult piece of property to develop.
Mm-hmm.
So there is a lot going on, there's a potential.
That's good.
For what will happen there. North Situate, not so much.
Okay. Is there any update on the MBTA parcel?
No, RFP has been issued, that, no, RFP has gone out yet. I think they were looking to combine the MBTA property with a little sliver of town land. The town, I think you've probably seen some school buses out there.
Yeah.
And they were talking about combining that with the land that the MBTA was going to be, you know, putting up with.
Wasn't there, and I apologize for not knowing this more specifically, but wasn't there something that the Board of Selectmen voted on with, like, that had to do with the MBTA property or something?
Not that I know of.
No? Okay, all right.
We had needed, with, let's see, there were a couple of us, John Danaghy, Al Banger, I don't know if Pauline Neese was there or not, but the MBTA person who said he was going to be there at 9:00 on a specific morning, ended up being on vacation and never told us, so...
They took the train and they were late.
Yeah, really, so...
Bill was at a follow-up.
I was at the follow-up meeting.
Yeah.
You were?
Yeah.
And what happened at that one?
Basically, they were going to refer to the Selectmen to see whether they'd either sell it or join with MBTA in development.
It's in the same spot.
Hasn't moved.
Hasn't moved at all.
Hasn't moved at all.
Town Planner report?
Anything?
Very busy with Hazard Mitigation Plan, which is the plan we need for all the FEMA grants, and trying to crank out some sections of that, and otherwise giving some support to the EDC, and I think that's...
Any word on the Toll Brothers' development?
No. No, things seem to be moving, but at a very, very slow pace.
Also, CPC, at their next meeting, will be voting on the different applications for money for the spring town meeting. It was postponed due to snow to the, I think it's the 7th of March. Selectmen's meeting is the next night, so a number of different pieces are coming forward.
I'm also logging our budget through the process right now, and Advisory Committee was, you know, pretty supportive. Tricia did cut back the Assistant Planner dream concept. That's, that dream is gone, and...
It just went with the iPads.
Yeah, yeah, she took away the iPad, sorry. But aside from a few details like that, everything's moving forward.
We're back to paper again.
Does it mean...
We kill more paper than the Selectmen do.
I know.
Does it mean that the Assistant Planner is just dead for this year?
It's dead for this year.
But would any of us want to step up to the plate and say that, gee, we really do need this, considering all of the rules and regulations that we're trying to enforce? The amount of work that's involved with all of this is more than really two people can handle.
There would be nothing to lose and everything to gain by doing that, so...
I mean, I think that is really, really important, that we have adequate staff. How can we enforce any of what we're, we just spent, what, over an hour on stormwater and what to do and what not to do, and yet, one or two people just can't do this themselves, as well as man the office and do the necessary administrative work. We're all volunteers here. I mean, I would suggest, as your, as the alternate, that you all, the five of you ought to consider putting together a letter to the town administrator citing the fact that we need more help. And that, you know, it's, you need to spend some money to save money. We really do, and I think that this is truly important, and I feel obviously very strongly about it.
I would certainly support that.
I don't think we're pitching it as a money-saving exercise, right? It's really more to support.
Providing the complete range of services.
Yeah, it's providing more support.
Right, and less lawsuits.
It is a cost center, so, yeah.
But, I mean, I've lobbied for years for help in the building department, and finally we do have it. But, and I think that it's important. We've hired all these different support people, personnel, whether it's human resources, all the facilities managers and all the rest of it, but they're not helping the planning board do what needs to be done out in the field. No, I think you're absolutely right.
Well, I think if everybody's interested in pursuing that, I'd be happy to, you know, put together a letter, but I think it would be helpful if you could give me sort of the argument basis that you already made, right, to integrate into a letter.
Okay, great.
Okay. Are you all...
Yeah, I'd definitely be behind that. Because I think there are, like you said, a lot of regulations and a lot of enforcement that just can't be done right now, per se, you know? Or it's difficult.
It's also all the things outside of the planning board that I'm responsible for, like this hazard mitigation plan. I didn't know I was going to be responsible for 50% of that, and I think it's at least 50%, maybe a little bit more. And there are issues that come up every single day that are pressing to someone, but they're pressing, going through, you know, the corner office, as it were, and so they're important to be dealt with, and there's only so much one person can do, so...
Bottom line is, we need help, you all. We need help. And if you don't get it this year, then we can try for it for next year, and keep trying until you get it.
Well, I think even the facilities coordinator, that didn't pass at town meeting the first time, then we went, or she went back the second time and got that, so, you know, try, try again.
All right. We have bond motion. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.